Please stand for flight.
My congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic of which you say is one nation, our God, invisible, redeemed, just for all.
Val Paul, Don Madoff.
Here.
Bill Hement.
Here.
Brian Madison.
Here.
Chad Wilson.
Here.
George H. Smith.
Here.
Attorney Jeff Meyer.
All right, here are the minutes from the last meeting. That's D K G. Is the resolution in the meeting or not? From the meeting?
Yeah.
I was looking at my resolution and I presumed I voted for one that's a paragraph left out on section three in A and then I have mine. And I thought this was the resolution that was there on Saturday at 9:00 AM so ten months into it. We have one of these days, Thursday, Sunday period, dah dah dah. You have to make the following Monday from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM on federal holiday, you know, the period, right, but.
Is that the English you got from?
No, this is.
Oh, no.
That was the old version.
That wasn't English.
That wasn't in the minutes.
It's in our product.
Is it already self corrected? I mean, I just don't know.
The minutes reflect what was read at the.
Higher.
Yeah. If the board would like to.
Do something different.
What it's got.
It doesn't reflect what we discovered.
That resolution?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
We didn't say, we didn't say anything wrong.
What's that?
We were in that meeting, we didn't say anything wrong about Monday.
That's what we'll say.
Well, this is, this is the. Resolution that was handed out. It was read, it was read at lightning speed. So if we're going to have to. Proofread everything. Prior to making a vote and make sure that every word is. Enunciated correctly, that's getting to be ridiculous. Leaving out half a paragraph. That we voted on.
What was left up?
They'll just read it out to you.
That paragraph wasn't in my copy.
No.
So everybody's copy reads a little differently.
Moving to mine.
It is mine.
It is mine.
I own.
I'm kind of the old one.
Correct.
This is the new one that Jeff wrote up.
And when you voted.
When we are voting up?
We voted on last meeting.
I think the consensus is. Obviously, different resolutions were handed out. Mr. Madison sent a visit, not reading like.
Mine.
Mine was that paragraph is missing.
That second part of the paragraph was.
Yes.
On Monday.
And in this. In the last month's.
Right. That was in the last.
Well, and we got it.
It was in the. It should have.
It was on the table.
Right. I've heard the resolution. That had that extra language in there. I can't speak to a Brian. Favorite copies that I ended up had that additional. It is why I asked Mr. Tredway at the beginning of the meeting whether he, what exactly he was applying. And he said he wasn't looking for extra days in the week, just the length of the season. So when I read the resolution, I did not include anything whether to operate Mondays or federal holidays because that wasn't in the application. If the board wants to amend the resolution or amend the conditions, it is free to do so. The minutes that were prepared were based on what was read and what the applicant applied for. If you want to allow him to operate on Mondays or holidays, you're free to make your decisions how you wish to make them. The version I handed out, you're absolutely right, had those extra two sentences that called for rain days and operating on federal holidays. I did not read it because it was not in his application. I tried to plan ahead as best I can.
You. You have the minutes.
You can have, I, my recommendation is that you approve the minutes and if you want to add that language in, you adopt a second resolution and then you like.
Am I allowed to address the board because it's about me? Or not?
No, no, not yet, yeah.
So we have the proof minutes and then.
Approve minutes and then you can, you can.
Backstage discrepancy?
Yeah. Discrepancy.
It's early. Is everybody right with that? If we amend, if we give the ability to amend it, we could suppose, I guess.
I agree with you. We have approved the minutes.
Next, any motion to approve the minutes?
I will second. All favor.
I.
Any names?
Name.
Any extensions?
All right, now you want to do that, now amend the.
Amend the minutes?
No, amend the resolution.
Amending a resolution.
Amending a resolution. I'd like to make a motion to amend the resolution. I would also like the amendment to be retroactive from the last month's. And I'll read from Saturday from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM and Sunday 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. In the event, one of the days in the given Thursday through Sunday period applicant is forced to close for more than six hours due to adverse weather conditions, an applicant will operate on the following Monday from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The applicant shall be allowed to operate on federal holidays during the open period of April 1st till the Thanksgiving Day. I don't have those Thursday.
Or Thursday of the month.
Now read the additional, that's retroactive to last month. You need to hold on this or?
Yes. Second it?
I'll second.
All favor.
I.
Any names?
I don't think, well.
Any extensions?
Okay. I'll second. So is someone with that?
All right, Jeremy, you're first on the list.
I did, we, uh, the last meeting, there's a disturbance in there about track rates. Does everyone retroactive back to, um, 2016? And I was unaware I had it in my last application, so I just pulled another application in, which I did, uh, exactly after our last meeting. Discussing basically back to where the 2018 version was, which is where we just came up with a track area limit on air, air rights. So eliminated that coming in and measuring it and scrutinizing us by the inch. So I took this as.
That's the only thing this is worth?
It's not the.
The only thing is that this.
That the, uh, the other thing you'll see in the application that was, uh, also retroactive back to. UTVs and ATVs, um, 2016 didn't allow that, 2018 did, uh, because we had to go back and redo it from what was 2018 until I look at the cover letter that you see, talks about ATVs and UTVs, just to make sure that we're covered in.
Now, is the starting gains inside the perimeter?
Oh, my God, yes.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
Absolutely. There is a map, um, I'm not sure where that's at, but, uh, you guys do have a map of track area limit to see what 2018. Nothing on the map was changed. Nothing's been bought up, I know there's. No, you have a map there.
I have files in your file.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Make a motion.
I'll make your motion.
I think if you read it.
Accepting that application.
I'll have it in myself.
Accept the application and set up a public hearing next month.
I'll second.
All right.
All favor.
I.
Any names?
Any extensions?
That's what you found her.
And so I know that this was the gallon. I'm learning.
I.
Slowly. Thank you.
Paul Callen.
Good evening, I'm here on behalf of Mr. Green and Mr. Merrigan, you know, property transaction. I've been on this board before, so it's like since some board calls. What we would like to do is, as soon as possible, a little bit of wire here and back down, there's a lot of line adjustments there. Mr. Green's mother had granted, uh, our whole property that had been granted, uh, to several family members throughout the years. There's been a few different deeds, uh, the last being 1988 was also a corrective deed, had it was a legal description. The legal descriptions weren't, weren't quite accurate without being corrected, an attorney did it, uh, I don't know the attorney, um, or how that came to be, however. However, today, uh, Mr. Merrigan's, I mean, first property and the federal search, he came back, that in the town records, the, the tax map identification is correct, however, the title had. Little well-known section here. Section. So, this is a parcel here, you'll see that as a square, um, almost a triangle. This, the whole parcel, the two pieces together are one parcel, which is correctly identified by the clerk as Mr. Green's property, however, in the title, um, these two legal descriptions do not match up. So. Mr. Green's property, according to title, is this square and his mother has, um, the lane surrounding it. So what we wanted to do is make a lot line adjustments, so the legal description and title and the public records corresponds with what the tax map has already. What I've done is prepared several affidavits, one from Mr. Green, his wife Suzanne Green is also on title, and one from, um, Elaine Green, his mother. Basically referencing a new, you guys, I apologize, I didn't have time to make copies. We have a new survey that was made on July 11 by Van Duzen and Skeens, and the survey will reference. This parcel, these two parcels as one parcel that will be one of the same that is, um. It works with the town clerk.
It's a little parcel, it's my garage. I wouldn't. A building shed back, two dollars, one building on there.
Now.
I own it.
Now, the only other thing on that is this, the survey, there's other parcels that may or may not be involved, I'm not, I'm not in care for anybody else except Mr. Green. And that's a particular property, maybe one day somebody else will have another, uh, transaction or feel a quorum for some of the lot line that's involved in their property. This is strictly for Robert and Suzanne Green, um, property on the tax map, I mean, number for this particular parcel, but it's a thing, go ahead and get their property transaction taken care of. I also have a copy of the original deed, or the deed in 1988 that's granted from Elaine to, uh, Robert and Suzanne, you can see down here, it says, this is a correction indeed, so this. This parcel's had a few different issues over the years. This survey, I believe, the meeting affidavits will correct. Any discrepancies to Mr. Green's parcel.
Whereabouts?
It's 1377, half mil, probably.
Which is in relation to where?
Whereabouts?
The address doesn't ring about.
Uh, quite a half mile on the right-hand side of two-story lot, Charlie.
Was the, was the.
Good, D corner.
Oh, okay, we're on that then, all right.
So here's color now, I don't know if that makes any sense. This is, uh. A home. You're a lot.
Oh, okay, I know what you're saying. What part do you want?
But there's, uh, no highlight.
Highlight.
It's what, it's always the end of the longer. It's sort of here. Which is where? How the deed goes exactly from the following. Two, A, X, one and round. Okay, that's a lot, four, you're got one, a lot. Okay, so you're.
Chated areas, the part that I thought, I thought I'd set it up with the affidavits. Because usually you have a lot line adjusting between owner one and owner two, you could interpret it between the mother having, being owner one and, uh, Robert Suzanne being owner two, uh, which was a property used to be through affidavits. So this, this property owner.
I miss the square. You want to be thinking on that. Making all your.
So the body that does the form, is that what you need or?
Well, I, I wanted to, no, we, I didn't submit, I was trying to get a couple, Tiffany, I don't know if you're Tiffany, I mean, I exchanged some emails and Tiffany was out of town when I was out of town, so. The maiden affidavit, I think, may get, uh, whichever way the deed board is broken, I think that owner, owner one, clearly Robert Suzanne was. Either way, I would say.
I mean, the affidavits have signatures from all parties involved, that's.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, the actual proof of a lot line adjustment, those, you know, when new lots are created and.
Exactly.
That's.
Yeah, that's another issue. The other property owners won't take that elsewhere.
And the light would be on this. Yeah, the interest of full disclosure, we represent, uh, Mr. Merrigan's, so I, it's no limit to this issue as well. So you're. I'm not accusing myself. I'm just letting everybody know that. I know what's going on.
We have, we, I think we've had a, a few conversations that this may be of practical, other than so solved.
I think one second, five seconds.
Did they finish that thing?
Very well, I can, I can make it, if we can make copies, um, I can get those recorded. I'll take them.
Yep.
Is there anything else you'd like?
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Well, to me, that next time.
I shall stay in the.
Yeah, you're not.
Yes. John.
Mike?
He needs to spend some time.
So I'm not looking for. See how. So the dotted line, then once, and zigzagging along the. Or here, we do, we do.
Yep. So this is, this is the line now.
Fourth point, if I want. Yeah, I need to staple up like two, five, two, like point from. It's on point two.
Three or three quarters.
Yes, yes. So I just.
And this is just taking one down.
And so like, I left the other, I would like, we, if you, road front, just come from the way, is everybody, you know, just try to think of your water. The way the whole, the whole property lived and housed. So very narrow, so if I want to keep the fire, then it goes down by the water.
Close, I say three, one, that's how I'm close to this.
We just, it's like. You can build that house, it's something very, very sort of. You probably would have got. Close.
Yeah, just like.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not very.
So I don't know. Let's be safe. So I don't know, I, I did.
Does anybody have any questions?
This, you just, you just open this. Wild subject on this place.
I think he's here. She is, Mark, I love the well is here.
Oh, well, it's there, I think. Well, there.
It's actually inside the rotten wall. The rotten wall, this is a stage over here. Everything's a.
Anything else?
Jim?
And also. You may look. Motion to approve the.
I'll second, I'll second.
All favor.
I. I think it's my honor, I think it's my honor. It's good sign of my life. My life has. I'll.
How is it?
Sixty days.
I sign it.
Isn't that nice to hear?
Thank you.
Can I have Jack?
Is there a public hearing without, as far as access on Dawson Way when it's not in pound alone?
It's not Dawson Way, it's on, it's on Sunset View Way, the, the writing on the note is wrong, sorry, it's on Sunset View Way, I'll show you. I apologize. And in the notes, it's on Sunset. Look on the back side of the link.
So who's accessing Dawson Way?
No one.
Yeah, our other property.
It's another, it's another property. Yeah, so I apologize to you, it's on the, again, it's supposed to be Sunset View Way, I apologize. Sorry guys.
I'm ready.
I'm ready. That'll be.
Yep. The rapid ones, we just heard. Yeah, I think this is all, guys. I.
I'll speak to you guys.
Hey, what do you got?
Got a little, uh, just doing some propane, because I'm just storage. On, uh, on our property, right out of the airport, so, uh, you guys are a little familiar with this, I did. Really, we're, so we're, we're beating some, we're eating pork bakes, I was taking to New York, we used to come up here, starting to get business up here, it's a lot of propane, and our, here is propane storage, just down in Rancida. So, uh, our trucks are filling up down there, driving up here to deliver, and, you know, so we would like to get storage up here, and it's been a lot easier for us, and we can be able to expand our business up here. You know, so we're looking to do a five-year lease, multiple five-year extensions, essentially, use the power of property and, uh. So we have a few of these, you know, Robust, and you have nine engines throughout the station, um, yeah, that's, those are the engineer drawings, that's from, so he's done some of these for us before. Yeah, that's material we're looking to do. There are those propane, propane storage. There's.
Is there any lane around that?
Oh, the lane.
Yes. Yes, and that's when he's with me, he works around. One day.
Uh, the only question I have, this is the law.
Sorry, correct me if I.
Like, like, this is why I'm so, so, this is the law.
Right, yeah, I've, I've got my words in the tank. But I put it all down.
So.
Yeah, that's my question. Is there.
Is there.
State guidelines?
Is there any. I didn't know, I'm just asking. I'm right, that's. I just want to. This is. This is everybody, everyone, we're crashing, it's like, oh, very bad. We shed some white on there. The only time we. We really get. It's like, if you got one, say, you live in a school district, right, so schools are, a lot of things, like, people. Yeah, something like that, we want to make sure if something happens, those people. Because I'm, I'm just. Because I, you know, I know they have the block line around, fence and all. Yeah, it's. All that security. No, that was my reason, sorry, I'm more exact. That is. So we have to find.
So, so.
A little, a little.
Over on the.
Except.
I would add to each of it.
Not that a lot of. I said that only down.
Yeah, that's.
What about that? Why are you keeping writing on all this? Yeah, we have.
I'm writing.
No. It could be possibly. Because of what we did, none of that, what, everybody starts. We don't have. Nobody will work. He ended, just going back. But then you got time to get back downstairs. You can't give a load off so fast. But if you hear.
Questions? I would almost like that, I hate to say this, our town engineer look at this and make sure everything is, and then run it up and up, I mean, that's my. Wouldn't hurt, I mean, my only suggestion, I mean, have a town engineer review everything, make sure he doesn't have any suggestions. I'm not a. Oh, he needs pretty quick. Does she probably uh? I'd say, I'd say everything. Right, if it's a public hearing, it's a good one. This is my like, so remember, that's, I don't know, we should have done December. Next month, then there's opening in December, then the next two weeks. Well, next, right, next month, we should be able, it's no problem.
So have the engineer look at it in the meantime, right?
Soon as possible. Yeah.
So I'll be a forward, forwarding him, he can buy a chance to say.
I would approve uh recommendations of our town engineer, I would like. This is part of that? I can't see it.
No, there's something else.
This is just.
I mean, you you think it's a big headache, but it's not compared to what a lot of companies use, there is a sixties and a hundred and twenty. Even cut, even cut a hundred and twenty and a half, take it to the house, like redo all the back and other. So.
I know somebody that I close order forty nine, which is salvage with a thousand, but over thousand, yeah. Matthew Hollis said.
Propane and I. Lost my hearing.
We run over top of the mull.
No, I hear, probably, I hear the truck.
Just out of curiosity, tractor trailer, standard tractor trailer, what's that hold?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand, so it's retractor trailer.
And we use a three, so it's an eighteen, because we get an eighteen down. Uh, we're, we're a bit back up, trying to try to pull up on the pipeline, on cameras. We could do that again, so essentially. So we have a studio, so I could just.
Alright, what are we doing? Make a motion to send everything to the town engineer, as I. Who has written the bottom up? Because the action's gonna. And say I accept the application schedule, so that you're, listen to what the town engineer also has to say.
Can you send them those?
Target? Yes.
Uh, do you guys have a contact with the town engineer?
Yeah. Check.
Check.
Was it closest to everyone? I mean, I don't know.
This is not a lot. Want to get a second?
I'll second.
All fair. Aye, eight days. How many sessions? Voluntarians, next month is. Yeah. Alright, very much. Evening. Actually, man. So.
Cause this is enough activity for the airport, we could refer something else. Yeah. So uh. It's actually probably what's posing is to utilize the hanger as a story, uh because of manufacturing.
Drink your wine.
Oh, I can get it better. You can only, you can only give uh three quarter ounce tasting in a day to a single person, so. What is your danger?
Quarter.
Oh, it's quarter ounce. Yeah. We all pour, we all pour with that, yeah.
We do stuff too, though.
Yeah. So this is the first stop I'm. That we can take a test already. We need to. Oh, yes. Yeah, we had here, it's hard to hear, it's like.
Well, there's a couple. You have a star.
I definitely met with that. They found out the operations on analysis.
You know what Bill's telling us?
Yeah.
Bill probably.
Crazy.
Yeah, yeah, Bill, he's, he's not.
Yeah, he's on the strike.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, he's, he's the.
You all have. Any questions?
So over for our land, it's basically interior.
You lost power.
Oh, you're in California for a minute.
Any questions, guys?
So this is, this is just the, in the existing building, the garden. Yeah, correct. Yeah. And this layout is. We can, we're filming for a message, we get ready for the national.
Is that based on your?
No, it's on, it's painted across, we have, yeah, so the runway.
Where in the park?
No, it's all ground.
Any questions?
Currently, I have a very, very, very. We've had fifteen.
Okay.
Now, we're gonna have, we're gonna have another case of cycling, so priority case. You could, you should see the tracker that happens in the virtual selling, there's not a lot, it's great, um of the manufacturing facility.
Want to be a second?
Second.
All fair.
Aye, aye.
Eight days. Any questions? Eric Henry. Oh. Yes, sir. Okay, tell us. Uh, I was. Neighbor. Purchased. I did purchase it. It's all, it's all rendered.
It's a, it's a, it's a weaker parcel.
Yeah, it is. Make a motion to close the public hearing, just tell everybody.
Second. This is. Aye. Aye.
Alright, okay, I, um, my neighbor has ten acres and I'm just purchasing two acres off of, and some of that, I have two acres from. For my own, for my own ownership. Any questions from the public? Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Aye.
A favor. Aye, eight days. Most subjects. We gotta do this. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with the land use film or some other position?
No.
Will the proposed action result in change in user intensity use of land? Will the proposed action create a character or quality of the existing place? Proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics or possibly establishment of current environmental areas?
No.
Proposed action result in adverse change in system level of traffic or kind of consistent infrastructure from mass transit, like in Milwaukee? Proposed action causing disuse of energy with thousands of corporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Will the proposed action affect consistent public water supplies?
No.
Public or private wastewater utilities?
No.
Will the proposed action create a damage to quality of court, historical, ecological, architectural, aesthetic resources?
No.
Proposed action result in adverse change in water bodies or animal, air quality, fluorofluor? Proposed action result in increase in pollution, flooding, the rain? Will proposed actions uh create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
So with motion, we're giving that operation. All second. All fair. Eight days. What was the question? I just wanna make sure I've used this, all this piece here. Yep.
I like trying.
This is the two acre. If you're. That's the part. And that's some. Like the Washington. She goes ask on the survey. Still got a mile, right? Yeah. I guess. All second. All fair. Aye, eight days. Any questions? Okay. You, my heart. Little bit of one. Give the fifteen, the policy. That'll be like. Anything else? I make a motion to close the meeting. Second. All fair. Station.